Eighteenth and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the
Where's the rest?
Thank you. The first order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to accept the agenda as presented.
And make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. General public comment, is there anyone wishing to speak to the board about an issue this evening that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to old business. Everyone should have received the landowner access agreement in their packet. Did anyone have any questions about the comments that Chris Leopold or the changes that were made to it?
No questions, Lisa, I have one potential comment. The the zip code in that's showing the address is using, I think it's zero five seven four one, it's not right in front of me, which is a Poltony zip code. I do not believe it's the zip code of the elementary school. I think that's zero five seven six four. Kristen Caligiri can probably confirm that and we probably just want to make sure it's noted correctly in the agreement.
Yes, it is zero five seven six four.
Okay, so the just the zip code on that address section, Chris had made a comment, there is a red strike through right there and it's not right in front of me, but there's something right. And if you like, I can tell you exactly where it is if you give me just one second. Alright, so really even before section one, just under definitions, under A, where it talks about the the property refers to a piece, it just has the wrong zip code right there. Maybe maybe halfway down the first page.
Okay, so Chris L, can we make a note of that, just to make that change? Are there any other changes, questions, comments on the agreement? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to accept the landowner access agreement with the change of the zip code under definitions halfway down A.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Nate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business, is there any new business to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll move on. Approval of minutes, December twenty first, twenty twenty, you should have received the minutes in your pocket. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the minutes that need to be made?
So one thing, Lisa, we had noted for, let me just get them pulled up again, sorry. In as for guests, we had non-applicable listed anywhere. We did have an audience similar to this evening, so just not sure if that needs to be noted.
Okay, I will go back and pull back my notes and see if I can send that to make that update to Shauna. Alright, with that update, a motion would be in order to accept the minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion by Jim, second.
Kristen Ross by second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of warrants, you should have received the warrants in your packet. Question should be directed to Louis. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
This is Kristen Ross, so moved to approve the warrants.
Kristen Whitman.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We'll go on to superintendent report, Chris L.
Thanks, Lisa. So I have a few items to discuss tonight, I'll try to be brief. As we know, we just returned from the holiday break a couple of weeks ago. I know that there were certain complexities surrounding the break and with COVID nineteen and with, you know, just travel, that we decided to make a shift to remote learning for the week of the fourth through the eighth. I know that we're still anticipating or just crossing our fingers and hoping that the post-holiday spike doesn't necessarily hit us, but we do see things occur in our communities and we've had, you know, positive tests last week at one of our schools. So we, you know, just we're taking on a day by day just to address it to see what happens, whether we need to shift schools or the the SU to more back to remote if if necessary. Most of our focus this this past couple of weeks have really been centered on finishing budgets and preparing for town meetings as well as the budget vote. We do have our Quarry Valley informational meeting, which will be held virtually on February twenty third at six o'clock PM. We will be discussing the warning tonight. And the town meeting day will be March second, twenty twelve. The voting will, I spoke with the clerks, take place as normally, I know that in West Rutland, I do believe it's going to be at their town hall. Proctor will be at the junior, senior high school and in Poltony will be at the firehouse. As we talked about earlier about COVID nineteen testing, we did take these, had the second round of testing took place in our GS GRCSU schools on December sixteenth. As part of that, as a result of that test, we had zero positive tests. But I and I said this in every being, that is just a snapshot, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's not in our schools, not our community, but it just gives us a, like I said, a take look at that moment in time. You know, we are monitoring this on a daily basis, you know, we talk to the Department of Health at least once every day, just about, you know, what how things are looking at our communities and our schools. But, you know, our third round of testing will take place, our janitorial seventh, which will, you know, is coming up next week or, you know, so we'll see what happens there. COVID updates, we've had five cases thus far across the SU. As a result of those five cases, we have not had to close, you know, take drastic measures across the SU. We've been able to keep, you know, more local controls while in some of our buildings, we've had to shut down grade levels or schools, you know, just do timing or, you know, do amount of close contacts we've had. But the mitigation measures and protocols that our staff and our administration put in place have greatly reduced the the impact within our school. We've seen that the spread has been limited in our schools, that we've had zero results of the zero, zero consequences of the COVID in our schools as a result of the spread. So we just want to make sure we keep, you know, keep it up, you know, protocols, strategies in place. So therefore, we don't have, you know, the spread that we see in other places, such as the the church up in Virgin. This past couple of weeks, we've met with Corey Valley unification and I have met with the seven through twelve building admins and the school counselors to kind of take a look at what the ways in which we can be better unify our three schools. The lion's share of the work will be done during strategic planning, which is going to take place later this year. We began with following things, so we have looked at common transcripts, we've taken a look at that already, we've discussed that, we're in the final stages of that. We're looking at common graduation requirements, particularly beginning with next year's ninth grade students. We're also looking at what that may look like for our tenth, eleventh graders for this year. We're looking at a common schedule and first period start times. Part of this is we look at, you know, exploring course offerings and expanded learning opportunities for our schools that would meet the demands of all of our learners and are sensitive to the, you know, the various pathways to graduation that our students will encounter. We want to make sure that, you know, we're not limited by just what we can offer each of our buildings. So therefore, it might be a situation where a course is being offered at Poltony that a student at West Rutland or Proctor should have access to, and so we're looking at better ways of doing this. I think some of the lessons that we've learned the past ten months of what the, you know, distance learning had kind of given us a template of what will be successful and what, you know, what may not work. So we are looking at, you know, like I said, exploring those offerings for our kids, which is part of what Act forty six was was supposed to be, was giving opportunities to our students and that's what we want to make sure we're doing. We're also looking at common handbooks and procedures across our three schools. Athletic eligibility, you know, extracurricular code of conduct, honors, awards, distinctions. Because as our students start to move across buildings, we're going to make sure that the, you know, the policies and procedures we have in place are kind of consistent across the three schools within our Quarry Valley. And that's really about all I have for tonight, so. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I certainly will want to appreciate the work that building administrators are doing along with you and Lisa Matson to take this path forward for unification. The advantages for our students and opportunities, I think, are going to be improved greatly. And that that's what we're here for and that's what we're working towards. So thank you very much for that, for that work. I did, did anyone have any questions for Chris? You did not receive principal reports in your packet. Because we were remote the first week of January, I opted to not make principals prepare written reports. So we are just going to go through and do a quick oral report about what's happened since we've come back. We do have the budget still to deal with this evening, so I just felt like that was the most prudent and since we were remote, not that much to write about. So I will start with Kristi.
Alright, good evening, everybody. We had our first week back remotely, things went really well. I was able to pop on morning meetings and join some small group lessons, which was really fun and quite impressive actually to watch kindergarten, to be able to, you know, unmute themselves and everything here was pretty spectacular. We are starting mid-year testing, so we're doing our MAPS testing starting week for Proctor Elementary School. So we'll see what growth we have from the fall to the winter. And also I've been busy last week finalizing a number of teacher observations and mid-year conversations with teachers about their progress and their professional goals. Not too much is happening at Proctor Elementary School that I need to report on, so if anybody has any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take them.
Hearing nothing, no questions, we'll move on to Kristen.
Hi, everybody. A lot of what Kristi said happened with us as well. The remote week, I got only positive feedback from staff and families. And I was able to pop in on some lessons, I actually did a formal observation of a remote music lesson, which was really amazing to see third graders navigate all of the computer techniques, they were, they presented their screens. They were able to use the chat, which, you know, I found to be very very amazing, quite honestly. Three of our classrooms right now are at maximum capacity. If we get any more students, then we will be relocating to the library. So we look at that on a weekly basis and I just continue to be appreciative of the teachers for their hard work and for the families for their support in the community as well. Oh, one shout out, I apologize, the Rotary did a food drive for us a few weeks ago and we, as a result, were able to provide an abundance amount of food to our families, boxes and boxes have gone in. So we are very grateful for their efforts in supporting this.
Great, any questions for Kristen?
This is Kristen Whitman, I had a question for Ms. Caligiri, if that's okay. You had mentioned, Ms. Caligiri, that some of the classes are now at maximum capacity. Is that as a result of some students who were remote at the beginning of the year moving to in-person?
That and we've had some new students register, so it's a combination of both.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you, Kristen. Joe?
Just to, again, I'll follow up what Kristen and Kristi had said too about, you know, the remote week. Thank you for giving people a heads up and not kind of doing it the night before like someplace did. One of my teachers sent me an email the first or second day saying how our attendance was, we were worried about the attendance at the high school level with these kids and our attendance was actually, it was better than some days with in-person learning, so. Who knows, to the teachers and getting that out there. Just shout out Mandy Mason and our pathways group or one of our middle school experience groups did a toy drive. They had a couple of boxes out in the lobby and it was a very successful, a lot of donations from within the school community, which was great. You know, we talked to the kids about always giving back, so that was nice to see. And, you know, we're ending our semester this week and starting a new semester next week, so we're looking forward to the second half of the school year. So again, you know, give a shout out to my staff. You know, the maintenance guy's been doing a great job, my teachers and IAs have been working hard and, you know, doing the best we can with the times we have, so I appreciate everybody.
Any questions for Joe? Great, thank you, Joe. James?
Well, good evening, everybody, I wanted to just give a quick update. First of all, I want to thank all of our staff, just like everyone else has, they've done a tremendous job with last week with remote learning or two weeks ago now and and then coming back last week. It was great, things are going pretty well with that. One of the things that I have been focused on, as Kristi mentioned, the MAPS testing, which is going on across the district, is what are we actually doing with that data? My continuous improvement plan team has been working since last spring on this and starting to build a data warehouse within West Rutland School. I've worked with Al, one of our innovation coaches just last week, on what that could actually look like and kind of move the school forward with that. I also want to thank Superintendent Sell for the facilitation of this cross Quarry Valley High School collaboration. For a small school like West Rutland, we, just like Proctor and Poltony, we do not have a tremendous amount of electives and other courses for students, regardless of their ability level, AP all the way to a more of a career track. And I'm really, really excited about what opportunities we can have for our students moving forward with this. Also wanted to give just a quick update. Our furnace, we received word last week that it was actually shipped, so we're very happy about that. We've been waiting, this was delayed, not because of anyone's fault, it was a manufacturing issue out in the Midwest plant that was producing them, another downside of COVID. And on a positive note, I want to give a big shout out to our music department that right before the holidays, Mr. Henry and Mr. Hampton were able to do kind of a cross-building holiday sing-along presentation that was just really good. And and I know when when folks watch a presentation with different like choir members singing, that is a tremendous amount of work that takes hours to actually get together. It makes, you know, two minutes of a song could take hours to prepare. So I want to thank those gentlemen and all the students for their hard work. It was a nice way to end on a positive note through the fall. So with that being said, I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions you may have for me tonight.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I also just give a shout out to Tyler Serini, I read a really nice article in the Rutland Herald Herald about him and we have been fortunate on Wednesdays, I think they nominate a boy and a girl athlete and all of our three high schools have been recognized for a number of athletes from the fall sports season, so it is lovely to see our students and our schools being recognized in the local papers. So thank you, James. Joanne?
Good evening, everyone. Beginning, we're planning for the new semester and we have a, an initiative that has been underway for the last couple of months in terms of planning, it's called Drop Everything and Read, it's our D E R program. And this really emphasizes to the students the importance of continuing to focus and develop on their literacy skills as well as critical thinking. And sometime in the month, well, the students will be able in the beginning to choose the literature that they want to read. But later in February, we will have a whole, we'll have our high school focus on one book that's titled Hate You Give. This is a book that's been recommended from the Council on Humanities and it's it's, it addresses racial inequity and I'm really excited about that because I think it'll generate a lot of good conversation amongst the kids. We're finalizing some changes for the students in their second semester schedules and already putting together schedules for the next year. As has previously been mentioned, I've been part of a group with Superintendent Sell and the other principals looking at challenges and opportunities of unification. And while I definitely can see some opportunities, I'm very excited about increasing the rigor of the programs for our kids. Right now, Proctor High School requires twenty-four credits for graduation and I think that we can challenge our kids a little bit more to increase as we give them more opportunities for learning, increasing opportunity as well. We are preparing for exams, high school students have exams on Thursday, Thursday and Friday this week. Our students begin practice for winter sports and that's been interesting trying to coordinate the cleaning of the gymnasium and keeping kids distance, but I think Jake's been doing a good job of staffing that. In the area of staff, I've got to give Tiffany a shout out because of the physical and wellness challenge that she presented to the staff, it's called Get Moving, where the staff will be monitoring their own physical movement throughout the day and the activities that they take on and I think, you know, really reminding people, especially especially in these times, that physical and mental wellness is really important for us to focus on, so. Thank you, Tiffany. And also I want to recognize Tiffany and also the community for providing just an incredible amount of physical opportunities for our kids. I mean, I have never been in a high school where I've seen the amount of equipment that kids have access to. Ping pong, you know, the typical basketball, soccer and those kinds of things, we have ice skating, today we talked about snow shoeing. We have ping pong tables, I mean, it really is incredible. And, you know, talk about a class that's really difficult to have its socially distanced. Tiffany does it without even thinking about it. I've been through the gym on a number of occasions last week and and I'm just really impressed with how we're able to implement our physical education program in such a way that all kids are being, are benefiting and challenged, but also attending to the safety protocols. That's all I have for this evening, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for Joanne? Okay, hearing that, Joe Harrington, was there anything you wanted to share with us about sports, winter sports, BPA updates?
Well, as was stated earlier, we were given permission to start contact practice tonight. Best case scenario moving forward is we have to have seven days of contact practice and I guess the best case scenario is we could potentially start games by next Tuesday. Of course, that is up to the governor and we will just continue forward until we're given the okay to go, but everybody's looking forward to it, obviously. And keeping our fingers crossed.
Great, anyone have any questions for Joe? Alright, thank you all for your updates. Moving on to personnel contracts. I did not have a list of contracts in my packet, do we have contracts that we need to be addressing this evening?
You should have received some contract recommendations, particularly the, you have the principal contracts and you have some extracurricular contracts.
I don't have that.
Did anyone else not receive that?
Does everyone have that?
I have that. Yeah, it was a word, it was a Word document, Lisa, that I think it was one of the few Word documents in the the zip file.
It's got the number five, it starts with number five.
Chris, would you like to just start that conversation then and I'll search for it, because I obviously didn't, didn't open that.
Sure, I could send it to you as well. So, you know, the principal contracts, you can see that you know, our Quarry Valley admins have made the decision this year to take a pay freeze, so they will be, receive a zero percent increase for next year. So therefore their salaries and the contract relations should reflect that. And then the extracurricular, they're just reflect just some of the the coaching that we, I do not believe was approved in the last meeting. And Lisa, I could send you a copy of the transcript if you want.
Are there any questions about the contract recommendations that you have before you?
Yes, I have two questions. First question, the very last name on it, it's David Parker, it just says P H S, it doesn't have the R or the O. Can someone confirm if that's Proctor or Poltony?
That would be Proctor.
I thought so. Okay, and then my only comment is I will want to take Poltony Extracurricular into executive session as well.
Okay, so, um, could we, could we have a motion to approve principal contracts and hold extracurricular contracts till after executive session? So would there be a motion to approve?
Principal's contracts.
Okay, motion by Nate, second?
Becca.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, and we will hold the extracurricular contracts till we come out of executive session. So moving on to finance, Louis, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. So the third draft of the FY twenty-two budget was in the packet. There was one, so last month there was a number of changes, but this month there's only one change. And it has to do around the vocational tuition cost. So we were waiting for the sixth semester rolling average from the state and we did receive that and so Stafford tuition is flat for next year, so no increase in the tuition. So the only change would be in reference to this, the way it's built, which is based on the sixth semester rolling average. And the state does that to kind of level off any dips and peaks in the tuition. And so the sixth semester rolling average did decrease from last year, which is resulting in a thirty-four thousand dollar decrease in expense and a net decrease of sixteen thousand dollars in education spending. And that and that is the only change in expense and education spending since the last round. So if you go to page fifteen of the budget, actually sixteen, total expense is up by two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, which is one point five one percent. Education spending is down by twenty thousand dollars, which is point one two percent, so about a tenth. Any questions on that before I walk you through the tax rate? Okay, and if if there was anybody that was not part of any of the previous discussions, any board members, the summary on, summary of changes on page one does list all the changes from draft one, draft two and draft three. And so all of those changes are still in here. We're not going to go over all of those again unless you ask specific questions regarding those. Okay, so the the next, the page seventeen, it doesn't actually have a number on it, but it's the tax rate calculations, the page after sixteen. I'll walk you through this. So FY twenty-two expense, as we just discussed, is up by one point five one percent, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Education spending down by twenty thousand, which is point one two percent. Equalized pupils is up by nine point eight three pupils, almost one percent. Equalized pupils is up by 9.83 pupils, almost 1% to 1,031 pupils. Uh, this is not a final number, um, but it should be pretty close. Uh, this was, uh, as of the end of last week. Um, so we're still waiting on the final numbers, but it, it shouldn't change too significantly. Ed spending per equalized pupil is $16,530, uh, which is a decrease of $178, 1.07%. Well, so now we move on to the state piece as well as any merger incentives. This is the last year that we're looking at any merger incentives. Uh, so we take the spending per equalized pupil, the 16,530, and we divide it by the yield of $10,763 to get a tax rate before we imply, apply any of the incentives of $1.53, uh, 1.5358, if you go out the four digits. Uh, we then apply the two cent incentive to get an incentive rate of $1.51. Uh, so last month we talked a little bit about the yield. Uh, we have not gotten any updated information from the state regarding the yield. Uh, this yield is based on the Tax Commissioner's recommendation from December 1st. It takes into account, uh, a few different points that were in his letter, which include the current state deficit due to COVID. It takes into account an increase of approximately three and a half percent of equalized pupils, or I'm sorry, equal, uh, education spending statewide. And it also takes into account some shortfalls that the state's having in the pension, the teacher's retirement fund. Uh, this number is not set until later on in the legislative session, usually April, uh, May timeframe. It's set by the legislators. They'll take into account all of the things that the, the Tax Commissioner mentioned in his letter, as well as any changes that have taken effect, taken place since December through April, whenever they make that decision. Um, so some of the big factors that could change between now and then, uh, one would be how much education spending is increasing statewide. Uh, preliminary numbers that are coming in from other districts that I've spoken with is that education spending is not increasing the three and a half percent, uh, that the Tax Commissioner estimated. Uh, this is due to a, a number of reasons, but the big one is that a lot of districts are trying to keep their budgets lean, cut costs because they know taxpayers are having a difficult time. It, uh, due to the economy, um, people out of jobs, so they're keeping that in mind and trying to keep their budgets low. The state is still also working on trying to resolve the deficit issue. Um, and the Tax Commissioner mentioned in his letter that he doesn't feel the taxpayers could absorb all of this increase all at once. And, and so the legislators need to, to, to take a look at how to resolve that, whether it be taking out a loan or, um, spreading it over time. Uh, so I'm sure there'll be more to come as that, um, legislative session starts. Uh, so right now we're using the, the Tax Commissioner's recommendation, but we hope that that number will change a, as we progress. And maybe we'll have some updated information before the town meeting, uh, but at this, this is the best number we have to work with. Uh, and just, just to, as a reminder, for those of you that are not familiar with the yield and how that affects, um, so the yield for last year was 10,998. As the yield decreases, it increases your tax rate. As the yield decreases, I'm sorry, I'm, just to repeat it because I'm not sure what I just said. So as the yield increases, it decreases your tax rate. As the yield decreases, it increases your tax rate. So the yield increased or decreased by approximately 2% since last year. Um, so that is in effect increasing your tax rate. Typically, the yield increases between 2 and 3% based on inflation and other factors. So we're seeing a block, approximately a 4 to 5% change in the yield, which is having a significant impact on your tax rate. Uh, the other factor that's affecting your tax rate this year is the incentive, um, it go, is going down 2 cents each year. In year one it was eight cents and then it was 2 cents each year. So we're on the last year of those incentives, which will be 2 cents. Next year that'll be gone. Uh, so that's the other thing that's having a negative impact on your tax rates. Our education spending per pupil has decreased and those other factors that are, are state factors are really, um, what's driving an increase. Uh, so going back to the specific numbers, uh, so we've talked about incentive rate of $1.51. Uh, the piece to the right does not affect Corey Valley anymore. Uh, this was another incentive, uh, due to the merger, but, which had a 5% threshold, up or down, um, until you reach the unified rate. All towns in Corey Valley have reached the unified rate, so this no longer applies. Uh, so moving to the bottom, uh, I've listed the equalized tax rate for each district, which is the same, I'm sorry, for each town, which is the same. Uh, we then apply the common level appraisal, which now is, this is the, the step that makes it so that the towns no longer have the same tax rate. So the common level of appraisal compares the fair market value of your home to the assessed value. If those two are equal, the common level appraisal will be at 100%. If the co, if the common level of appraisal is above 100, it means the assessed value is more than the fair market value of your home. And, and that will, uh, that will bring down your tax rate. Uh, if the CLA is below 100, it means the fair market value of your home is more than the assessed value. And that will, and that will increase your tax rate. Uh, so Poltony CLA is 97.5. Uh, and that is a decrease from last year of 98.15. So that will have an increase in tax rate. Proctor common level appraisal for this year is 99.87. Last year was 98.48, so that is an increase that will decrease your tax, Proctor's tax rate. And West Rutland is at 105.64 compared to last year of 107.33. So that is a decrease in the CLA that will increase West Rutland's tax rate. Uh, so the next line lists the tax rates for each of the three towns. Uh, Poltony $1.55, Proctor $1.51, West Rutland $1.43. Compared to FY21 tax rates, Poltony is seeing a 4.7 cent increase. Proctor is seeing a 1.6 cent increase. And West Rutland is seeing a 5.7 cent increase. And, and that difference between the towns is all as a result of the CLA. And, and that's why it's differing from town, from town to town. Any questions on that? All right, so hearing none, I mean, that, that is, um, the budget in a...
Why don't you see the, uh, the total number that's going to be on the warning, Louis?
Okay, uh, so the total expense, uh, so there'll be three numbers on the warning. There'll be the total expense, which is 18,420,265 cents. The next number that'll be on the warning will be the equalized, uh, the spending per equalized pupil, which is 16,530 dollars. And then the last number that will be on, will be that states that that spending per pupil is a 1.07 decrease.
Are there any questions on those numbers? Any questions on the budget as a whole? Reminding you that we need to have a motion to accept the budget or approve the budget this evening. Any issues on the budget that need to be addressed for you in executive session?
Um, the only thing that I think we should discuss is if there's a need for any ballots, um, or, um, extra articles on the ballot. So we have to...
Well, we, we're not discussing, we'll discuss, this isn't approval of the warning. This is simply approval of the budget.
Okay.
Hearing no questions, comments, I'm sensing that a motion would be in order to approve the budget as presented.
Or make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Nope, Tom, no, Tom says no.
I'm sorry.
Tom says no. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Does, is, is anyone else voting no? Motion passes by majority with one opposing. Louis, you had one other issue to discuss with the board?
You're muted, Louis.
Yes, uh, last month we talked about the trust and scholarship account. Uh, so, so my, the question that I posed to the board was that, uh, we currently have a separate bank account. Uh, and it's for Corey Valley Trust and Scholarships, um, including, uh, college scholarships, MRP, uh, which is the Proctor Mortimer, and, and PFP, which is the Proctor, Proctor Endowment. Um, that account has approximately $600,000 in it. Uh, I propose, uh, taking that account and combining it with the operating account in order to be able to use that cash a, and lower the amount that we have to borrow each year, which would save, um, the, the district between five and, I think, five and $10,000, uh, is what I put in my report, um, in interest costs. And, and so my report, uh, goes into detail the need for borrowing each year. Uh, our budget expenses start in July of each year, but we don't start receiving cash from the treasurer or from the state until the very end of August, beginning of September. Um, so we have two months' worth of expenses before we receive any cash. And we really don't catch up, uh, cash-wise, and so probably about six or seven months in, uh, we're, we're just starting to catch up now. So we have to borrow, and this is common with all districts across the state, uh, based on, um, their, uh, cash intake. Um, so we take out a tax anticipation loan in the, each spring, which takes effect from July to, July to June. Um, so my recommendation was just simply to combine those accounts in order to be able to lower our lending borrowing and, and save on that interest, which is about a 2% interest rate each year, uh, give or take depending on environment, uh, the, the lending environment. Uh, when I brought that up last month, there was also another suggestion that was thrown out rather than, uh, combining the accounts, was keeping both accounts open and just doing a annual loan from the trust and scholarship account to the operating account, which would have the same savings net effect. Um, we would borrow that money on July 1 and, and then replace it before the end of the year and, and reinitiate that each year. Um, I, I'm just trying to propose a cost-saving measure. If the board's in favor of it, we, e, either option, we can move forward. If, if, if not, um, it doesn't prevent our, our work at all that we're doing. Um, it just, it's just a way to save a little bit of money.
Comments? Questions?
Louis, this, yeah, Louis, Louis doesn't really answer the question, but just for, for my own information, um, the thousand, there is, is most of those funds that you mentioned?
Uh, I'm having a hard time understanding. You were breaking up pretty bad. Um, I'm going to try to answer it based on what I think I got it from it. If, if not, then you're going to ask the question again. Um, so a lot of the spending coming from the trust and scholarship account is really, uh, periodic. So they're spending at the end of the year for the trust and sc, for the, a lot of the scholarships. Uh, by then we would have put back all the money. PFP and MRP are spent across the whole year. But we, we would keep, take that into account whenever we're doing the borrowing, um, to make sure that there's sufficient funds, uh, to, to be able to fund those expenses.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I, I turned my camera off. I'm not sure if it's me or the whole system, but, um, the other question is so that, that, that scholarship fund, it just kind of sits there. There's no interest on it. It's not being invested to, to have some return at all.
Uh, I mean, it, it's not invested, but it is sitting in an account that earns interest. But the interest we're earning is, uh, very small compared to the interest that we're paying out. I mean, interest rates are below zero, um, in some cases. Uh, our interest rate in our operating account, last time I checked, was a half a percent. And that was about, I think, a month, a month or a month and a half ago. Um, I believe it's the same interest rate in the trust and scholarship account. Um, but we're, we would save about a, a percent and a half just based on today's interest rates.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? I prefer option one. I would also like, um, if a motion is made, if the, if the board is in, in, um, agreement with this, that a, a report would come to the board when the money is, um, borrowed and the amount, and when the monies are returned. And I don't say that because of any, um, concerns I have or anything like that about employees. So I just want to put that up front, but, but employees change and boards change. And I think if we're authorizing something like this to happen, as new employees come in, new board members come on, that if that becomes, um, a standard part of the borrowing, the report aspect of it to the board, it just keeps it a little cleaner and transparent for the board. So all of a sudden, you know, new board members aren't like, well, what are you talking about? And, you know, we're 10 years down the road because they've had no conversation about this. So, um, if it's the pleasure of the board to go forward with this this evening, I think just, because the things we do today, we can't just think about how they impact us right at the moment. We have to think about how they're impacting us down the road and how we're sharing information. And so I just think that's a clean way to, um, share information with new board members as they come on.
I guess I'll ask if any other...
This is Kristen.
Yep, go ahead, Kristen. Go ahead, Kristen.
So, sorry, I might go in and out again. I, I know what's going out of my internet, which I have to step away to go fix. But, um, I just wanted to say that, Lisa, I would support your suggestion for the, for number one on the, of the two, um, proposals that, that, um, Louis put forward.
Yeah, so my comments were simply going along their lines. Does anyone have, um, say, different feelings from Lisa? Does anyone think option number two is, is a better option versus option number one? I'm definitely neutral on the choice and I do, um, I agree with the comments that you made before about the report too, Lisa.
This is Kristen Whitman. I guess I'm, I'm also neutral, but I just, it's making me wonder if option two, if the intent behind it is that it, um, I guess creates a little less in the way of work for Louis. And not that we're trying to make less work for him, but I'm just thinking about, um, you know, for the amount of cost savings. And then for, I don't know how much it is, how much work it is to reinitiate. you know, for the amount of cost savings, and then for, I don't know how much it is, how much work it is to re-initiate a loan, or if there's money involved with that. But then, um, you know, also reporting to the board, and so I just didn't know where Louis was at now, if it still seems worth the cost saving.
Uh, I, I think it's still worth the cost savings, um, as far as initiating the loan. I mean, definitely option two is a lot easier of a, a step, because we do it once and then it's done, and there's no reporting. Um, all of the financials are kept second, separate due to our fund accounting, due-to, do-froms, and it, it tracks all of the, the cash that's coming and going. So obviously, uh, definitely, option two is a lot easier. But as far as option one, um, I'm able to create, um, an online transfer from the, from one account to the other, so I can do that, um, twice a year, it, it, it only takes about five, 10 minutes to do that. And then I can create some sort of generic form that I put with the board packet each July, each June, or even before, whenever we pay that back, that's just showing that that transfer took place and the date that it took place.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So what is?
Yeah, I just want to, Louis, is, is it pretty much as simple as, uh, the difference is like a one-time transaction where we consolidate the accounts? And, uh, for option two, and option one means you'll have up to two transactions per year? Am I understanding it in a super nutshell?
Uh, pretty, pretty much, yeah, yes, yeah. I mean, the only way it would be more transactions is if we, um, either transfer too little, we decided that we can transfer a little bit more to save, to increase our savings, or we transferred too much, and we need to transfer some back to be able to, to fund PFP. So right now, um, right now, we have the two bank accounts, so every time we put a check out of the trust and scholarships for PFP or MRP, we have to select a different bank account so that make sure that we're pulling it all from, from the right, from the right account. And then we do a year-end reconciliation to make sure that, because some, sometimes the wrong account is chosen. Um, we, we do annual reconciliation to make sure, uh, that all the due-to-do-firms are, are zeroing out and that the right amount of money was pulled out of each account. Um, a- and that's currently being done. So that's, I think, this, we, the thing that I mentioned in option two, where I said it would eliminate those reconciliations, because only having the one bank account, there's really nothing to reconcile, um, as far as that. I mean, there's plenty to reconcile, but not a- as far as that goes. Um, but in, for the most part, there would be two transactions each year, uh, of moving cash, and then the journal entries that would go along with those, as opposed to the one, one-time, just one-time journal entry.
Other questions? And what is the pleasure of the board on this request?
Well, I would go ahead and make a motion to go with option number one. And help me on the wording, Lisa, for making that, um, motion with the reporting that you wanted to see. So I make a motion to.
I, I think what Louis said was fine, if a report, a July report when, uh, funds are withdrawn and a year-end report showing when the funds are repaid, just so that board members see that. I mean, I, 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 I think, I don't think if we withdrew two hundred thousand dollars and in November, we said we needed fifty thousand dollars more, I don't think every time needs to be a report. I just think it needs to be, uh, um, a general, uh, year-end report to, to the board, letting the board see what happened. I, I think it's good for the board to be involved in financials and have an understanding about this. And, uh, you know, there's a lot of money in scholarship and, um, endowments. And it's not, as I said, current, there are no current issues that I have with anyone, and I hope I am gone long before Louis. Um, but I think about decisions we make today and the implications and impacts going forward.
I could second that motion to approve option one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there anything else you have for us, Louis?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
Okay.
Um, the next regular meeting is February fifteenth. The annual informational meeting is February twenty-third, which obviously will be a little different this year and will be virtual, so that information will be shared with you with respect to, um, and that information will be on the warning as well for the call-in and the, um, Google meets code. Are there any future agenda items that the board would like to see on the upcoming agendas? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to move into executive session for a student matter?
I made the motion.
At six fifty-six, second?
Aye.
So I, um, we will excuse everyone, except Chris, the board, and April Sloan.
April Sloan, I just sent you a meeting link for the executive session via email, so you should be receiving that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Everyone should have received a separate meeting link for executive session? Did all board members receive that?
No.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Do we need to know the polling board was supposed to meet? Seth, you had mentioned that earlier, too.
Yeah, that's a great question, um.
I can hang out, I can hang out and wait, and Chris can, and, or whatever, I don't mind.
Okay, can we do that, because we're gonna have to come out and go, we'll go back in for that, and we'll have to come back out and, um, bring Louis back in for, for something else also. But I, if we could address this first.
Yep.
This is gonna be the, the, probably the longest. All right, so if everyone can sign out of this meeting, sign into the executive session meeting, I will meet you all in there. Thank you.
Into the executive session.
You should have a link, Tom, I'll, I'll resend it to you right now, okay?
My, my computer's down, I had to ask Jim for the information for this meeting.
All right, you know what, um.
I'll send it to Tom in an email.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
No, I need a text.
I'll send it to you by text.
Beautiful, thank you, Jim.
You got it.
Bye.